Wow. You're either here or this is a leg dangler.
Call the meeting to order. Mayor Lee, would you listen to the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. Ann, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Keenan. Vice Mayor Saleh.
Here.
Mayor Lecliter.
Here.
Mr. Gerber.
Here.
Mrs. Boring.
Here.
Mr. Nissi Zerker.
Great, thank you very much. Well, we're going to begin this evening's meeting. We have a special guest, Mr. Dan Sullivan, Tournament Director of the President's Cup, and he would like to address us. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Hope you're well tonight. I have no agenda other than to say thanks and give you just a quick recap of the President's Cup. You know, we started on this journey with the President's Cup two years ago with the goal of producing what would be deemed as the most successful President's Cup by the PGA Tour in its history. And over these last two years, starting with Council's initial support and then following up with Dublin staff's effort to produce, we were successful in creating an event that was seen worldwide, that was at the envy of many people in my industry, and ultimately delivered on the expectations, almost higher expectations than what was originally put forth. And we could not have done that without your initial support and interest. I think we all kind of jumped in together, saying, "We don't know what's going to happen, but we have a good feeling that it's going to be successful," and ultimately it was. And in the next, let's say, three to four weeks, we will have some quantitative information that we'll deliver back to Dublin staff and to Council to deliver, not on the economic impact side of the equation, but also just on the overall worldwide exposure that we're all able to be a part of during that week. I think I'm most proud about what happened during the week with all the ancillary events that went on within the city of Dublin. The competition was great, barring the weather. But what happened in the city, whether it was the public art with the golf balls and the piano, or the ForFest on Thursday evening, the economic international business breakfast on Thursday morning, all of those events were seen by the PGA Tour, by many of our guests who came into the community for the first time, and took away from each one of those a complete appreciation for the work that was put forth, the interest and the commitment by you as Council and the community at large. And I would like to say that, in total, all of those events were deemed as best in class by the PGA Tour and will be utilized for future events. So we have a lot of pride in the fact that we were able to come up with new ideas, with successful ideas, and frankly, we couldn't have done that without your initial support and guidance, as well as the city's staff members and all their support. I think that every department within the city was involved in the President's Cup in one way or another, and frankly, there's no way we could have done what we ultimately did without their support. So I just want to say publicly and personally, thank you. There'll be more down the road, but I thought it was an opportunity just to come in and offer my thanks. And I know we do have a video that we'd like to show just a few highlights from the week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can't tell you how excited we are, from a PGA Tour standpoint, to be here in Dublin. Come to Dublin, Ohio, and we'll make sure that this event is the best that's ever been staged, and it'll be something that everyone who stages future President's Cups will look back and say, "That's the way we need to do it."
It's finally arrived, and we're all very excited to be here. The golf course in great shape, the international team is very excited, they're very motivated this week.
Yeah, this is the center of the golfing world for this particular week. Two-hundred-and-thirty countries are going to see this on television, they're going to see Dublin, Ohio, they're going to see the hospitality, they're going to see the enthusiasm, they're going to see the support, they're going to see a lot of things that I'm very proud of where I grew up. And so to have that displayed on television for this week is, I think, a pretty important week for this city.
The stage is set, and let it be no doubt, the world is watching.
When you watch golf on the tour, everyone is an individual. Here, it's a team event. You do get a partner, a couple guys change a little bit, you know, they're a little more fun-loving, fun-going, outgoing. You hope for the best for everybody, but guys are going to win matches and lose matches, and at the end of the day, you know, you just need one more point than them to win.
It'll be fun, and it's just like it is for every year at the Memorial. I mean, people come out and really support this event, and this whole town is obviously a sports-mad town, and I think this week will be no exception to that. It'll be a lot of fun, and hopefully, we can, you know, make some birdies and get these people going.
The PGA Tour said to me four years ago, "Make sure that this is best, that it's the best ever," and it's coming to reality. We're going to be able to do that. And it's not just because of Murfield Village Golf Club and the golf course, but it's about once you step off the golf course and go into the community and how people have embraced this, and there are so many unique and creative ways that we've rallied around this, whether it's the piano, whether it's the ForFest. Just the opportunity for Dublin to really shine and show its best during that week is coming to reality, and what it means for the PGA Tour is that these people get it. They understand that it's not just four days of golf, it's an opportunity to come together.
Yeah, I was born in Dublin, I've lived here my entire life, and I absolutely love it. I always say that Dublin's one of those cities where you can do everything right here in the city. So yeah, I mean, the city comes together, they put these great events together. Dublin's the only place to ever host the Solheim Cup, the President's Cup, and the Ryder Cup at Murfield Village. It's just a great spot, so I love it here. It's a lot of fun, and I think the community comes together and rallies around these great events.
This is the first time that we know that the streets have completely closed down for a festival like this. It's such a treat to be able to come to this and be part of it. I think it's a great tribute to Dublin.
I think it's just a great event. It really is bringing a lot of attention to Dublin, which I think is just outstanding. It's such a great community, it's really just a fun thing to have in your town and to be a part of. It's really very cool.
I haven't seen this at the President's Cup, you know, the excitement level from the overall community. I mean, you get the corporate support, you get the membership support from the club, and that's usually common when we go to these events, but you never really truly get that community support, and it's evident here. A lot of these guys didn't play college golf, they're able to come out as professionals and be teammates with other guys from other countries, you know, on the international side, but from the U.S. side, they get to do it every year, you know, with the Ryder Cup and the President's Cup, but whenever they get to come out and represent their country and represent more than just themselves on the golf course, it's pretty cool.
We've laughed a lot this trip, or this week. It's really just been a fun week for all of us to hang together, and what I have found that, over the course of my career, these weeks become some of the most special weeks of the year and of my career. They're weeks that we look back on fondly, there were friendships form that last a lifetime, and they're the weeks that we look forward to the most. As the year starts, it becomes a goal of all of ours to get on this team, and it's something that we continue to enjoy.
To have the opportunity to win the cup for Freddie and all the guys on the team means a lot to me, and to be able to have the trust of the guys and be able to go out there and earn a point, it means a lot.
We do play the Memorial here every year. Our players play, and so do a lot of Nick, so it's kind of like a home. But on behalf of our team, we would like to say to Nick, "Thanks for the two years you've put in, I believe you've got more of this," and to your team, "Thanks for coming over and giving us a great fight."
And I'll end with this. Thank you for your patience on the fence. It's coming down this week, it'll be completely off the golf course, and we'll work with your staff to get the plan in place for 2014 Memorial Tournament. Looking forward to working with you in the future. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dan. Dan, thank you very much for coming this evening and, you know, sharing those thoughts with us, and I think all of Council would echo your sentiments with respect to the community's contribution to this effort. You know, certainly Council was fully behind this, but it couldn't have been done without the community and all of city staff, as you said, you know, from A to Z, every department was involved. I also want to point out that Mr. Nicholas, both at the award ceremony and I guess it was probably the press conference following, acknowledged the city of Dublin's contribution to the event, expresses gratitude, also sent us a letter doing the same thing, expressing his gratitude and his pride in the fact that his club is located here in the city of Dublin, you know, reminding us that he and his wife Barbara maintain a residence here in Dublin, and they're proud to say that they're from Dublin, and they appreciate the community's support. And, you know, that was a nice acknowledgement, and we appreciate that very much. Thank you. Moving on to citizen comments with respect or regarding matters not on tonight's agenda, Mr. Mauer, if you're in the audience, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening, Your Honor, and members of Council and members of staff and a thousand other people. I need to, Your Honor, revisit for the fourth time, I'm afraid, not afraid, an issue which I've brought up a number of times. You remember last time I asked you whether you had, you had been offered, I think, the opportunity to bring back the university football coaches for the rally here next summer? And I think you'd mentioned that the Council had put up $30,000 or something to do that. Has that been done?
I believe we've made that commitment, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
And just to clarify, Mr. Mauer, I know you may know this, you refer to it as a rally, it's a training camp?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, for high school students. Just want to make sure we're clear.
Right, so are they coming?
I think we're counting on it.
Yeah, we had some preliminary information, and Scott Dring from the Convention and Visitors Bureau will be here at the Council's December 9th meeting to provide us with an update on that.
Okay, well, some dark things have happened, I think I'll tell you about them, because you might become complicit in problem that will backfire on you. You know, when I was here last time, or last few times, I told you that at the time last year, when the OSU football team won its final game, perfect season, I had sent out an argument to the university for the abolition of football from the university on academic grounds. Now, I don't, how many of you are familiar with a program on television called Frontline? Frontline. A few, a week or two ago, Frontline did a several-hour exposé of the scandal in football, namely, the ignorance that the players were held in with respect to concussions. It was, of course, started by, well, it was a wave of it. There'd been a number of football players who had gone into retirement. One of them brought the thing to the fore, and I can't think of his name, because I don't remember ever seeing him play, so the name doesn't register, but he committed suicide, and he left a suicide note in which he said, "I have committed suicide because my brain is going out. I can't remember anything anymore, and I can't face a life in which I find myself unable to recall anything."
I saw the program, Mr. Mauer.
You saw the program? Okay, then you know about it.
Yeah.
Well, at any rate, you know what's happening? The concussion, that there are some of the big league players have lined up individually and collectively to sue the league, and it's a very serious problem, and it's going to eventually change football. Now, I myself, you know, confess, I've been a screaming, howling person at a football game. You know that my favorite hero is Brett Favre, and I even came in here one night, you remember, and took off part of my clothes so you could see the number four on my back, remember that? Well, at any rate, I don't know, you probably heard about this the other day, he suddenly got a shock of his life. He suddenly realized he could not remember a major segment in the life of one of his daughters, and it has shaken him enormously. So this is going on, and you might want to be very careful not to become complicit in supporting the event there, which we just talked about. Football is going to change, it all stands to reason. If you'd done a little bit of thinking, you would have known it. You can't have two people running at each other about 10, 15 miles an hour and colliding. You can't hit, this is a pretty tough thing, the skull, but it can take 30 hits a game over 20 years. It's going to happen, and it has happened, and it's a catastrophe of a major proportions. So I think you should prepare for it and be quite wary about inviting the football rally here. I'll still call it a rally. So that is my, and I realize this was a, this might be a tough audience in which to bring this issue up, but it is a very serious matter. The game might change to the point where I'll play it when it becomes tag football. That would be the game I play. But at any rate, it's on its way out, maybe two, three, four, or five years, but it is finished. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Moving on to the consent agenda portion of our agenda, there are five items listed on our consent agenda this evening. Certainly, a council member that wishes to remove any one or more of those five items from the consent agenda. Hearing none, therefore, I would move that we approve the actions requested for the five items listed on this evening's consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Ann, would you call for the vote, please?
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Nissi Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on then to the second reading of ordinances. We have just one this evening, that is Ordinance 78-13.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documentation to acquire 4.39 acres more or less fee simple interest from John H. Kilbury and declaring an emergency.
Thank you.
As mentioned, this is for the acquisition of a 4.4, or approximate 4.4-acre parcel of land between Dublin Road and the Scioto River, just north of the 100 North High office building that you see in the exhibit above. The city will be acquiring the property for the purchase price of $725,000, which is about a little over $165,000 per acre, and also, as part of our agreement, we're providing for allowing the current property owner to continue to occupy the home for a period of one year. A couple items of interest, this meets one of Council's longstanding goals of acquiring property along the Scioto River, and also, you can see at the bottom of the property, the designation of the Indian Run Stream that flows through the property. A significant portion of the Indian Run Stream is on the lower piece of property that's being acquired from this property owner. And also, one of the things that we're learning as we continue to evaluate the capital improvements related to the Bridge Street District with the pedestrian bridge, one of our issues or constraints that we have is how do we get down to the river to construct the bridge on the west side of the river, and this site will provide an option potentially to use for access down to the river that will eliminate the need to utilize North Street and create issues with existing businesses. So based upon the need for the property for Parkland and the desire for the construction or to use the site as access for the construction of the pedestrian bridge, we're asking that this be adopted this evening as emergency legislation.
Thank you. And I would point out to council members, if you haven't noticed already, but in our red folders was a copy of the lease agreement. Any questions, comments from anyone? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to treat this legislation as an emergency?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
And if you call for a vote on the emergency?
On Mr. Nissi Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
And on the ordinance? Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
And on the ordinance? Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Moving on then to the first reading of ordinances, beginning with Ordinance 84-13.
Amending Section 153.066 of the City of Dublin codified ordinances to modify the Bridge Street District approval process.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. As Council is aware, the Planning and Zoning Commission has undertaken a comprehensive review of the Bridge Street District zoning regulations. That review began in September, and the commission set out with an initial focus on reviewing the review and approvals section of the Bridge Street District Code. The council recalls when the code was originally adopted in March of last year, the city's code-writing consultants and staff emphasized the importance of periodically monitoring the effectiveness of the code and revising it as necessary to make sure that the intent of the code is implemented as we move forward with implementing individual developments in the Bridge Street District. The Planning Commission, in their review of Section 153066, expressed some concerns with the current reliance of the Bridge Street Code on the use of the Administrative Review Team, or ART, review process as essentially the default reviewing body for development plans and site plans under the Bridge Street District regulations. The commission felt that there should be additional opportunities for public input and commission input throughout the review of those larger development plan and site plan proposals, and the commission's staff reviewed a few different options for how to deal with those concerns. The commission also expressed a general concern that the very detailed prescriptive requirements of the Bridge Street District regulations, although the intent of those is certainly consistent with the city's plans for the Bridge Street District, that essentially to make sure that when development proposals are reviewed, that there be an eye toward making sure that the overall intent of the city's plans be implemented, and it's not simply a series of checklists or of individual code requirements, if you will. By way of comparison, this is a flow chart in a very simple way outlining the current review process as it is currently adopted in the Bridge Street District Code. All development plan and site plan applications are required to go through a pre-application review with the Administrative Review Team. That's a 14-day review period. Following that, there is a required basic plan review, and that's a 28-day review period. The Administrative Review Team reviews the basic plan and then provides a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission then approves, denies, or approves with conditions of that basic plan, and then, following that decision, a development plan or site plan application can be filed with the city, and at that point, the Administrative Review Process really begins, and that's for a typical application, is a 28-day review with the ART. There is what's referred to in the code as an elective review procedure, or we've often referred to that as a kick-up provision, in which the ART may essentially forward an application onto the Planning and Zoning Commission based on certain criteria for the commission's decision. Following an approval through either of those processes, then, an application can proceed to permitting. As proposed with Ordinance 84-13, based on discussion between the Planning Commission and staff, what is being proposed is essentially a dual-track process, and a version of this was originally considered during the original adoption of the code last year. This would retain the existing required pre-application review with the ART and also the basic plan review. The ART would continue to make a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission during the basic plan, but at the basic plan, in addition to the Planning Commission providing an actual decision on that proposal, the commission would also determine who would be the required reviewing body as that application proceeds through the development plan or site plan review process. So based on a series of considerations that are written into the code, and I'll review in a moment, an application may then proceed either through the Administrative Review Team process as it's currently laid out in the code, and that would continue to be a 28-day review period, or it would continue through a Planning and Zoning Commission review process for the remainder of the review, and that would be a 42-day review period, so that adds an additional two weeks. That allows for sufficient time for the Administrative Review Team to review and provide a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then for that item to be placed on an agenda to go to a public hearing before the Planning Commission. At that point, under that review process, the Planning Commission would be the ultimate deciding body as to whether or not the application is approved or denied. I mentioned there are a series of considerations for the Planning Commission to take under consideration, and these are written into the code during that, require review body determination. The first of those is based on the complexity of the project, the potential for neighborhood or community-wide effects. The second is consistency with the community plan or other applicable city plans, and also with principles of walkable urbanism, which are to be added to Sections 057 and 058. That's the general purpose and intent sections of the code. This was a recommendation of the Planning Commission, and it gets to that larger concern that the review criteria not simply be based on all of the very specific prescriptive requirements of the code, but there be a consideration for the overall extent to which an application achieves the vision laid out for the Bridge Street District, and the commission recommended a detailed list of principles of walkable urbanism. Staff felt that those were very appropriate to add to the overall general purpose section of the code, and so at the October 17th Planning Commission meeting, staff and the commission reviewed that section of the code specifically, and the proposed amendments to that section will come to City Council for your review at your next meeting. Also, at the October 17th meeting, the commission discussed the extent to which the code should continue to reference the original vision plan for the Bridge Street District adopted in 2010 as opposed to the community plan. As Council knows, with this year's update to the community plan and the incorporation of the Bridge Street District area plan, that essentially incorporates all the relevant aspects of the original vision report. The commission felt that it was important to be clear about which of these documents is the primary document that the code should refer to, and recommended that throughout the code, references to the vision report be transitioned over to references to the community plan. That change has been made in the version of Section 153066, that's before the commission, before Council this evening. And the final criteria is the number or scope of potential waiver requests to code requirements. So these are requests to potentially modify a requirement of the Bridge Street District regulations, and if there is a significant number of these, that may be a very good reason for a project to remain on the Planning Commission review track. There are a number of other fairly minor technical modifications to various sections of the review procedures. Some have to do with the review criteria for development plans or site plans. For instance, getting again to the commission's overall concern with making sure the development application is reviewed within the overall context of how it fits into the development pattern for the Bridge Street District. Some language has been added to make it clear that that's the intent, that there's a broader surrounding impact for development proposals, and all of that information should be considered. Also, the review criteria for each of the types of applications now reference these principles of walkable urbanism to be added to Sections 057 and 058. Also, the commission wanted to make sure that the review criteria specifically for site plan applications, and those are the types of applications that get into a lot of the details of how an individual piece of property is to be developed, including architectural details, that the review criteria make it clear that there is an expectation The commission did recommend a couple of modifications to that section. One is that for architectural modifications, it be clarified that applications that involve more than twenty-five percent modification to an individual facade are no longer eligible to go through the minor project ART review and would go to the Planning Commission as a site plan application. Also, the commission recommended adding a kick-up procedure similar to what was originally in effect for site plans and development plans, so that if a minor project application comes before the ART but for various reasons may be more complex than what was anticipated by the section of the code, the ART could forward that to the commission for review. For minor modifications, these are very minor modifications to sites that may come about for ordinary maintenance or refurbishment or zoning code compliance. We wanted to make sure that the code was clear what circumstances those could proceed through, simply a director approval, and that's similar to the process that's in the code today for planned unit developments. And finally, the law director reviewed the abandonment section of the code and recommended some proposed language to clarify the procedures under which a property can be determined to be abandoned if construction has not proceeded as originally intended, and the provisions under which that property can be required to be brought back into its normal state. The Planning Commission reviewed the section of code throughout September and October, and on October tenth, recommended approval to city council of the proposed modifications to section one-five-three oh six-six. And planning also recommends approval of ordinance eighty-four thirteen. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments?
No, I just want to say that, no, I agree with this. I think this is really good, and especially, I think the field trip pointed this out when we all went on the field trip, the variations of the architecture, the quality of the architecture, the, and I think Tim pointed this out too, the, if you've got a small unit, the elevation or the ceiling height, how that really gives you a more expansive feeling in your unit. And, you know, those things all are viable and important issues that should be reviewed and improved upon by our planning staff. So I think it was very worthwhile to go out and see the different people who are building the kind of things we're thinking about putting in at Dublin. So it's a good program. So, no, I welcome this.
I wanted to just follow up on a question about the abandonment, since we do have a structure and there seems to be some question about the city's responsibility in having allowed that to occur, which of course we know we didn't allow it to occur, they went bankrupt. But so, in reading on page something of something, I'm trying to figure out what is significantly different so that taking into consideration the site that we are aware of right now, what would have been different had we had this language than the current language?
I'm informed the law director has laryngitis. Let me attempt to answer that question. Just a moment if you'll allow me to find that section of code.
I have it under track changes, but it says one of twenty, you know, page one of twenty, but it's all, you know, all of them say that, so. It's the last page of the track one, though.
One specific item is that at the time of determination by the Director of Building Standards, the project has been indeed abandoned. The code now clarifies that if the owner fails to restore the site to its previous condition within one hundred and eighty days, the city may take any and all actions necessary to restore the site to its previous condition. And that means the city could essentially contract with somebody to remove the structures that are in progress, restore it back to its previous condition, and then the cost of that would fall back to the property owner.
So right now, if my recollection is correct, which it might be wrong, but the current code required us to give them notice.
That's correct.
And upon the date of that letter, I presume, started the hundred and eighty days. I thought it was still a hundred and eighty days at this point.
That's correct.
And so let's pretend that we're done with the hundred and eighty days. What now would happen if they didn't either finish building it or take it down?
Well, we could institute an action in court, which we're, we're going to end up in court anytime we go to take a building down. I mean, this building's got seven figures, has been spent on in the ground, the one you're referring to. We felt after, because this was our first brush with this, we felt that our position would be better served in the courtroom if we were more specific about the charge back on the land for the cause to remove it. We can do it now, okay? And there are things happening on that property, which I'll be briefing you on the next, by the end of November.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You can't just go take that property without court action. That would be an illegal, illegal take.
Well, we can.
Because somebody owns it.
That's correct.
Bankruptcy, whoever's bringing action with respect to bankruptcy.
We're not taking the property. We're only restoring it to the position it was in before they started construction.
But there's real value in the, the steel.
Very, very real value. But we would, we would issue a notice to them, we're going to take it down. They would challenge us in court. We will be in court on this if we, if we exercise this, no matter what our code says.
Do we have any precedent anywhere in the country where that, this has been done? Because I'd like to see, I'd like to see what's happened. I'd like to see some court cases that either upheld or denied it.
Well, there's both floating around, Mike. It really depends on the value of what you're taking down. I mean, if they have fifty thousand dollars of improvements on the site and you take them down, you're not going to get in a fight with a big corporation over that. And we're working with their lawyers and their planning people. And I've been on the phone, conference calls, last two weeks, almost every other day.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars of steel.
There's more than that.
And more than that, and plus the labor to install.
That's correct.
And everything else.
We feel weak, we feel we are in a good position with the code the way it exists today. We think we'll be in a better position in future issues by adding this, adding these, adding these words.
I understand the better, and I think that's probably a good thing, but this doesn't help us, this doesn't change anything, as you pointed out, with respect to the court action that would be required.
Yeah, I think you're.
But that's fine.
Yeah, I think that's.
It's stronger than it was, it's still.
That's correct, Mike. That's correct.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Merrily, could I follow up on that a little bit?
Sure.
I'm assuming in most cases where this happens.
Pardon me, please?
I'm assuming that in most cases where this happens, that there's a bankruptcy.
Well, it normally would be, they, they did not go bankrupt.
I understand, but just sort of hypothetically.
If, if there's a bankruptcy, there's a whole new issue, because then the federal court completely controls what we can do. The reason we can use our statutes is they did not go into bankruptcy.
I understand, but I'm trying to think in the context of what's being proposed here.
Okay.
And just my, you know, surmising that in most cases where we would see something like this, that the property owner, the developer, would have declared bankruptcy. I mean, maybe not in every case.
Well, that's correct. What would be, what we would be doing then, we would be seeking relief from the trustee who would be in control of the property.
Take a further example, you look at, what is it, Chase Erickson's project in Hilliard. That thing was ready for a CO in less than thirty days. There's probably tens of millions of dollars invested there.
Correct.
And how would this process help that? That would be a nightmare.
Yep. You know, this is the first project of a commercial basis that we have seen in Dublin where it got put on hold in the middle of the project. We've seen a lot of slow things happen, but never one that for two and a half years, they shut down five of these in the country.
And I don't know whether this is practical or not, and thank you very much, Merrily, for bringing to our questions here. Didn't mean to hijack your question. But I thought that there was some conversation amongst council, you know, with respect now, you know, to the property on one sixty-one, you know, regarding a requirement of a bond. I don't know whether that's practical or not, you know, which would allow, you know, funding for us to engage in the process of taking it down.
You do with streets.
That's correct.
That's a requirement.
That's correct. We've looked at amending our whole commercial, understand that would.
It would add a cost, I mean.
It would add lots of costs. A construction bond on a commercial project, if you're building, you know.
Typically, it's in, yeah.
Right, the total cost.
Does anyone do that? Does anyone do that, any municipality, any?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, just asking.
And in part, you know, it's not been something that's been a regular occurrence, but, you know, the circumstances.
That's not our experience, okay. That's it, thank you. Thanks, Merrily.
I think that, I like the recommendations of the change. I think that the concern that I recall we had at the time was timing, and that this still is a concern. And as you can see, even in your recommendations, you're adding two weeks potentially. I mean, these are outs, they're not supposed to be twenty-eight days, or it's supposed to be up to.
Correct.
So it'd be interesting to know, have we always used the up to, or can we honestly say it's really average fifteen and a half, or whatever it is? You know, because that, I think if we psychologically say the up to, then we won't get there that often. And we need to really watch that, because we are adding two more weeks. And that was what we were trying to avoid. But my main reason for supporting it is because as I begin to really think about what we're doing in that area, it is, of course, dramatically different than anything any of us have experienced, whether it's staff or the planning and zoning or the city council. And so we want to stay on it, you know? We want to really be engaged in working with the developers closely to be sure we all get what we hope the vision ultimately is. And I think that this will give us the ability to do that, but it will also give the public the ability, which we were taking the public out of the process, which I don't think, you know, in retrospect, we should have really ever done. So that's the primary reason for my support of the recommended changes. Thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of my main. I agree with you, Merrily. I think we've talked about the public input process, and I think this gets us, gets this code back on that track, which I very much welcome to see. The one, the areas of interest to me at this point are what, what are commonly accepted principles of walkable urbanism?
That's a great question.
I mean, when I thought about all this process, and I'm sure we'll learn more, it sounds like we're going to have more that will come to us, but, you know, the things I was looking for was, one, public input, public input, public input, actually that's three. Fourth would be, you know, the community plan. And, and I still like the way we did it back in ninety-five, so to speak, when we had about a kajillion people on board of that community plan. So the whole community had some input. It wasn't just going through every few years and, you know, staff and others make a few changes and we call that a new, new update. But be that as it may, but I think the community plan needs to be a large part of this. A lot of resources have gone into that over the years. We started with a lot of momentum back in ninety-five. We've had a few updates since, and I'd kind of like to see that as primarily the guidepost going forward. Walkable urbanism, that's going to change from time to time. Depends on what architecture, architect, you talk with, what community you're with, so forth and so on. So I would like to see some things in here, I guess with respect to those, those guiding principles would be some of the things we used to use in the PUD process. You know, and these are subjective, but I think so are the principles of walkable urbanism. And it's, you know, is it compatible with the surrounding areas? And I know it's going to be a different area, so I'm not talking about, you know, comparing this with a, you know, neighborhood over on the west side of town. Is it consistent with the surrounding area and aesthetics, so forth and so on? I know we have a very strict list of materials and things, but I think it's very important that we have some flow and, you know, some things that go on with this whole process. And not the same cookie cutter with each project, but, you know, a little creativity and all those sort of things. Also, I've been watching, or trying to understand, rather, what is the role of ARB? You know, it seems like sometimes they are advisory, other times they could effectively squash a project. For ex, well, I won't give a name of a project, but there is one nearby where they, the applicant has to go to get a permit or permission to demolish a few buildings. And, and, okay, that's going to last for a certain period of time, then this developer's going to come in for an application to do some things that may expire. And I don't think there's quite things in the code for that to, you know, for ARB to pick it up again, that kind of thing. Or if they do, they could theoretically say no to it. So, you know, I don't know what the answer is on the ARB, but it was never my intent that the ARB would be, in essence, have a veto power over, over projects, whether they're approved by staff, by this board, by P and Z, or whomever, or, you know, the residents as a whole. So I'd encourage P and Z and also staff to please look into that, because I think a case will come at some point, or that will, that will happen. And it might be something that we all want to have happen, but ARB says no. And I'm not trying to pick on ARB if there's anybody out here, I apologize. But I, I've seen that through the code, and it is a concern of mine.
So to clarify, as the code's currently written, the role of ARB is that any project that goes through the Bridge Street District zoning regulations will go through an ART review and recommendation to the ARB, but the ARB would have the ultimate decision authority, whether it's a development plan or a site plan or a minor project.
Yeah, and we had this with PUDs a long time ago when I was on P and Z, and it was a question of, well, who's going to look at this case first? Is it going to be the Planning and Zoning Commission, then go to ARB? Or is ARB going to look at it first and make an advisory determination for, for P and Z than to go on the council? So I think we're, we're still there, and I think we need to in some way, you know, address that and see what we can do.
So you're talking about identifying the process via, you know, what's going to go to ARB, and then what is ARB's role? Because you're confused about that?
No, I mean, I understand what will go to ARB.
Right.
I just, but it seems that there's a potential for ARB to disapprove a project or, or some aspect, which in effect squashes the whole project. And is that something we really want to have happen?
Is there a mechanism of some kind that we can have a fail-safe if it wants to come back to council?
That's, that's.
That's.
In a typical rezoning, you have a situation where it goes to P and Z, and then P and Z gives their, it's an advisory body to council.
That's P and Z, though, but.
Right. So would it be appropriate to have a similar ARB process?
That is an option. There could be some similar type of option. As you know, all of the land within the historic district is now zoned, so that piece of the process isn't really part of the picture unless somebody actively requests a rezoning. But there certainly could be an option that would reintroduce the Planning Commission and/or council as part of the review.
Yeah, and I don't think we're going to be able to decide tonight, but we'd surely like to see some ideas, because I think the way it is now is just, you know, I, I think we're, we're going to hit a brick wall with this at some point. We really are.
Well, we, we may hit a brick wall, but I guess in thinking about our historic district, I know the people that live there and the people that do business there have concerns about what is the Bridge Street corridor plan, sort of the overlay, mean for our district? And we talked about, you know, having a light touch on the historic district. But some, you know, that's in the eye of the beholder, and I don't want to, I, you know, still very much value the ARB process when it, in respect to the small area that's our historic district, because you don't, you know, that's an area that is, is absolutely priceless, and it's not like we get do-overs. It's, you know, once we impact that area, we impact that area. So I think staff needs to come back to us. I agree, Rick, that's something that needs more discussion.
Can you remind me of the boundaries of that ARB authority?
Yeah, the boundaries of the historic district are generally the Indian Run on the north side, so the Kilbury Track that the council just considered is that the Indian Run there is the northern boundary of the review district. The Sciota River, I'm sorry?
Down to Short Street, basically.
Correct, down to Short Street, and then across to Kramer Creek, and then up through the school site, back up to.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Seminary, basically.
ARB generally does a fantastic job. I just see some, you know, loophole here, not a loophole, but a problem here.
Merrily and I have been asking, where does, is the ARB defined in our city charter?
It's defined within the zoning regulations.
Yep.
Okay.
It's not in the charter.
But if they, what you've just described as the geographic area that they're responsible for, how does that relate to the Bridge Street corridor going up to Sawmill Road?
It's a small area of it, really, right?
This is one, yeah, one portion. There are two zoning, well, three zoning districts that fall within the historic district, and that's all part of the Bridge Street zoning regulations. regulations.
So, conceivably what could be impacted would be the potential for Indian Run at some point, the library, that corridor west along the Indian Run, a little bit of area north of Oscars.
Correct.
Pretty much...
And infill development along High Street.
Across the river's out of play for them.
Correct, that's correct.
I would agree with Amy and others that, you know, I think historically they, you know, the intent was to retain really the historic picture of the community in that, you know, sort of defined small area. I think it's incumbent upon us that both to continue the educational process of the people about the vision of the things you just mentioned, which may be different than the house that's, you know, had an addition to it, you know, in the past, and that we have to make sure we're understanding as an elected body what the authority and principles are for them to make their decisions so that as we appoint people, we're appointing people with that knowledge base, which I think I'm hearing a little bit different for the future.
Let me pose a question then, for instance, if we were to develop a parking structure on the Darby Lot, that would come under ARB's purview?
Yeah.
And what if, you know, what if that's a perfect example of quashing a project because they just don't want it there?
Well, that's what I'm...
Well, we already know, one they...
I don't want to be painted in the corner, I mean, I very much support ARB and preservation of the historic characteristics and quality of that area, but I think everybody on this council does, but you're bringing an example which is perfect, you know, the parking garage, for example.
Promotes everything else.
Theoretically, under this code as it's written, as I read it, you know, ARB could say, you know what, we don't feel that's consistent or appropriate or whatever and say no.
And then where are we?
And is it in there then, you're saying?
There are appeals processes built into the code.
But it's required of the developer to do the appeal.
Where's the appeal go, is it Muni?
Internally.
Well, we have an option to hear it, maybe, and otherwise it goes to court.
Do we have an appeal?
No, we don't want to supersede anything down to Muni.
I believe the appeal would actually come to city council.
Okay, well, that's better.
That's all right.
I don't think it's an automatic appeal.
I don't think so either.
Let me take a look at that and get a memo back to you before your next meeting.
Yeah, that sounds good, thank you.
You know it's in a week too.
But getting back to the gist of this, I think it's fantastic, thank you, P&amp;Z. This is exactly a good start, I'm really going to be looking forward to seeing what those principles of walking or urbanism are, that'll be fun to look at.
Tim, I got a couple of quick items.
Yes, please.
You're done, Rick? Just that, you know, two things, I guess I've always found the ART process mysterious, so I'm really glad you guys looked at this. These guys all have a lot more experience in this arena than I do, but this was, I thought, different. And then secondly, the timing is really, really important with respect to our development community, that we, and Merrily pointed out the fact, because it says 28 days, doesn't mean we have to go that long, we need to do everything we can to make sure that process is moving along quickly and efficiently as possible to yield a good result. So, that's what I'd like to just add, thank you.
Thanks.
I wanted to ask two questions relative to the process. A concern that I have heard expressed is architecture and at what point do, you know, the code is very prescriptive, but then there is the subjective part of architecture and, you know, what fits in the community, what doesn't, what's too modern, what's not modern enough, you know, all those aesthetic questions. This, if it is a major project or a project that is deemed by planning commission at the time of their review to be one that they get to come back to them, then that's where the architecture piece of it and the public process is?
Correct.
Okay, and so, what I guess I hear you saying is that in most cases, P&amp;Z will have the ability to review the architecture?
Yes.
Okay, and then with regard to signage, we have seen, since we redid our signage code and I thought it was pretty minor, what we did, but I've seen a lot of things around the community that I don't know that I define as minor. And again, I understand that's just my, you know, that's my thing, I pay attention to that for whatever reason. But where is that in the process when we look at these, you know, signs? Because we saw all the pictures of the signs and we, you know, different opinions, some of these are cool, some aren't, when we had that meeting out at the Golf Club of Dublin and we said we wanted interesting signs, we want different signs, signs that somehow symbolize the business. It was very, very interesting discussions about what we were hoping for. And so, where do we get what we were hoping for, I guess is my question.
That's been a big point of discussion amongst staff as well. Currently, as the code is being proposed, signs remain one of those minor project reviews that goes through the ART review. There is a provision in the code for what's called a master sign plan that if a property owner wants to do something that deviates from the code, that could be brought to the commission for the commission's review. This actually segues to one last point I wanted to make, as the commission proceeds with reviewing the remaining sections of the code, we will get into the more detailed code requirements, including signs. So, after the review of 057 and 058, the commission will begin reviewing all of the more detailed sections and we'll likely get to signs within the next few meetings and I'm sure there will be discussion about that very item.
Right, and with regard to timing, I just want to echo what my colleagues have said about timing. I guess when this first came to us, I was reluctant to have this go through, have our new zoning code for the Bridge Street corridor go through the full P&amp;Z process because of time, but the missing piece is the public, the ability of the public, and I guess sometimes, you know, there will be no public that shows up, but I, you know, predict that in other cases, there will be a lot of people that are very interested in some of these projects, depending on where they're located and what the proposals are. So, I'm very glad that we have that built back in and so I think that that's good, but I think it's important that staff, when you get it, make a list, and I was told by a developer once, you know, I don't mind, I can meet any standard that you want because it's Dublin, I want to be here, but I need to have what I need to meet at the beginning of the process. So, that means staff has to be on their game at the first point and say, you know, this is what we need, and then when it gets to P&amp;Z, they've got to be on their game and saying, this is what we need and not, you know, go away, come back, go away, come back, because then we get into our six-month, 12-month and nobody wants that. So, I think that we'll just have to get better and I'm assuming that we will, and then I appreciate that 18 months has gone by and you guys are, you know, taking this back on again, and I'm guessing that probably when we get some projects under our belt, maybe we'll need to go back and look at, you know, what's going well and maybe we can back off some of this or, you know, retool, but I'm guessing this is an ongoing process since it is so new for all of us. That's all I have.
You know, I've heard timing a couple of times up here tonight and this city's been, I think, has done a very good job of its development and I don't think timing's an issue. At first I thought, well, let's speed up the process, but you know, what's happened here is that, you know, most of the communities in the United States are trying to go to PUDs and we had a great PUD process in place for 30-some years. It's been very successful and it's worked, certainly at times it could go a little quicker here and there, but, you know, we're going the other direction, we're going to a form code. And so, you know, when we talk about timing, I guess I'm looking more at timing to ensure quality products for all of us and our residents. So, I just feel I have to say that because I don't want to rush through these things just because to make a developer happy.
Oh, I agree. And Rick, I totally agree, having gone to NLC, there wasn't one person that was excited about form-based code accession. They said, you've really got to be careful and adapt it to your community. Warren Fishman stood in front of us after going to APA and said the very same thing, you've got to be careful, and I think this is a step toward being careful and I'm glad to see it. The one thing, Amy, I really agree that the signs have got to be looked at and personally, I wouldn't allow any orange signs that were wider than eight inches, but that's just me.
I'm going to miss you, Kathy.
Pardon me?
I'm going to miss you with signage.
I was like, oh my gosh, every sign, new sign that I see come up in shops, the River Ridge seems to be orange, and not that orange is a bad thing, but when it's overwhelming the building, it could be. I appreciate your work, I go along with, I'm very concerned about a straight form-based code in our community that doesn't fit our community values and that's what I think it is without the modifications.
Thank you. On behalf of council, I'd like to thank staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission members, some of which are in the audience this evening and of course, those that aren't here for your efforts with respect to these recommended revisions. Echoing some of what's been said by my colleagues this evening, you know, at the outset of this whole discussion regarding the Bridge Street District and its code, among many other things, we talked about predictability and we talked about the relative speed of the process. While certainly, you know, being mindful of some of the comments, you know, that Rick made and others, you know, we don't want to sacrifice quality for speed certainly and, you know, potentially adding 14 days, I don't think it's going to be a deal breaker. You know, but predictability, you know, is something that we've heard, you know, for a long time. So, anyway, I think probably we've, you know, said it all, it's in the record and, you know, thank you again to everyone else and we'll look forward to the other revisions, you know, that are coming down the road, including the sign.
Could I clarify the discussion regarding the role of the ARB? Is their desire of council to see potential revised process as part of the second hearing of this or something to delve into at a later time?
Mr. Smith said that he was going to get us a memo. What I was hearing council express is that they would, you know, rather than the option being going downtown to the courthouse, you know, that there be an appeal to city council, that option be available.
I just don't know if we can have that back to you by next Monday, because you have a meeting next Monday.
Yeah.
You can have the memo.
No, well, we have a meeting, no, we have a meeting. Yeah, we'll give you the memo, but not the...
See, that's six days.
That's understood, but is that helpful, Justin?
Yes.
I like it that you can't talk back.
Okay, so, we'll have the second reading next Monday, is that correct? Okay, very good, thank you, appreciate it. Moving on to the resolution portion of the agenda, we have a couple this evening, beginning with Resolution 63-13.
Ratifying amended Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission articles of agreement and bylaws.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Our MORPC representatives are Merrily, Genesee Zirker and our city manager, Marcia Grigsby. I don't know who's going to give the report here.
I'll start and Merrily can add any other comments that she has, but this has been a process that's been going on at MORPC for about six years and it's been reviewed by, there was a subcommittee to review and propose amendments that went to the administrative committee of MORPC and then subsequently to the full board of MORPC and it was approved in September of this year. And in order for the changes to become effective, 51% of the members of MORPC need to approve this and we're asking this evening that the amendments as identified in the memo be approved. The one thing that is interesting to note for the city of Dublin is the fact that our number of representatives on the board, based upon the new population breakdowns and our current population, will increase from two members to three. So, beginning early next year, we'll need to make an appointment of another member to the MORPC board.
That's great.
Awesome.
Merrily, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, council, any questions or comments? Ian, if you call for a vote on the resolution, please.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan. Mrs. Boring. Ms. Genesee Zirker. Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Resolution 64-13.
Appointing members to the I-270-US-33 Northwest Interchange Aesthetics Design Selection Committee.
Introduction, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Ott.
Good evening. Before you, this evening is a resolution to appoint community members to a selection committee for artwork for the I-270-33 interchange. The city of Dublin staff and the Dublin Arts Council staff took a look at the community and tried to get a diverse representation of the community and I'd like to recommend some individuals for appointment to this group. Representing elected officials, we recommend council member John Reiner. Representing the business committee, we recommend executive director of the chamber, Margie Amrose. Representing residents at large, we represent Susan Swite, a long-term resident of Dublin. And representing the Dublin Arts Council board, we recommend Jerry Hasslett, who has been on the board for approximately a year and is also an accomplished self-taught artist. If council would like to go forward with those appointments, it would be necessary to make a slight modification to the resolution before you to strike section five and to appoint those individuals I've listed to you here.
Do you want to motion to that end or you want to have a discussion?
Second.
Yeah, I'll move that we adopt the, as presented and also striking section five.
Second.
Thank you. And Ms. Ott, just to be clear, these individuals are, if you just briefly explain the process, what their role is?
Sure, on November 13th, the creative design resolutions and their lead artist, a gentleman named Stephen Weitzman, will be presenting three concepts for artwork at the I-270-33 interchange to the community. That'll be at 7:00 PM in the Abbey Theater on, again, on the 13th. These individuals that you're appointing this evening will have the task of digesting the feedback of those individuals who participate in that community meeting, as well as individuals who submit their response to the design options online and coming back with a recommendation to the Ohio Department of Transportation for the inclusion of artwork in the construction project once instruction commences in 2014.
And these meetings are open to the public?
Absolutely, the meeting on the 13th is open to the public and we encourage folks to attend.
Great, very good.
Is the 13th also budget workshop day?
No, your budget workshops are on November 6th and November 20th.
Okay, I must have gotten...
There is a change in council's calendar?
There was.
Yes.
I would like to ask a question about section...
Kathy, you're on, microphone. Section six. Is there, a lot of times when something's finished, people don't think it's finished, so is there a timeline on this that we can say November 30th or whenever?
I anticipate the responsibilities will be less than 30 days.
Okay.
We can bring back, I can report back to council in December on what the decision was.
Okay.
Of the body to conclude its work.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, Ian, if you call for a vote on the resolution, please.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zirker. Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes. All right, thank you.
And then finally, we have, for our consideration, the council 2014 meeting calendar. Any comment?
I recommend approval.
As recommended.
All right, second.
Second. Discussion, questions? Whoever holds your peace, no one? Okay, Ian, would you call for the vote, please?
Mayor Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zirker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
abstaining.
Great, thank you.
That's the shortest one I've had in a while, Kathy.
Thanks. Staff comments?
Yeah, just a few items. Paul put a note on my desk this evening that the ODOT bridge deck repair work previously scheduled for last week at 1:61:33 over I-270 is on for this evening, beginning at 10 o'clock. And then also, there was information that we received earlier today about a public hearing that ODOT was having tomorrow evening with regard to the addition of a northbound lane along Sawmill Road from I-270 up to Hard Road that they anticipate beginning in September of 2014 and that public hearing is at the Northwest Library on Hard Road tomorrow evening. We just got notice of this yesterday or today or... Yeah, we just, we just heard today. I know, I don't know if Paul, I know our engineering staff has had conversations with ODOT and we knew that they were working on this, but as far as I know, we found out today about the public hearing or the public meeting for tomorrow evening. Great. The final item is based upon the community forum. Last Tuesday, we'll have a brief recap report to city council at your next council meeting. There'll be some additional follow-up and discussion, I believe, scheduled at the... There'll be some additional follow-up and discussion, I believe, scheduled at the November 14th P&amp;Z meeting and then there'll be a more detailed report to council at your meeting in December. And we're currently in the process of all the comment cards and feedback that we received that evening, as well as comments that we're continuing to receive online. We'll have that information for council for your review. And that's it.
Right, thank you. Council roundtable. Mike, you want to begin?
Sure. Just wanted to thank staff for that memo, that complete memo on the Build America Bonds for the COIC, the explanation on the bond issues. I started making notes on sequestration and read the next paragraph and you covered it. So, very well done. Also, the follow-up on the community authority issue. I hope we're communicating with the residents up there in that part of the world. I know that we've said we're doing this, we're going to do that, but do they know that? Are we, do we have a list or is there a way for us to not have them call council and say, "What's up"?
Yeah, I know, we have, we have individuals that we have contact with and we've been working with Washington Township and the residents that are, as part of the, I guess, their representatives from the area. And I don't know if Sarah has any additional information above, beyond what we had in our memo.
I just think it'd be helpful if we have a list of people that we can, whether they're in or they're out, or they're going to sign the amendments, or whatever the documents are, whether they easements or...
Correct. Washington Township has been working with property owners to execute the necessary easements and they, we feel like they've been good ambassadors also of keeping that community group up to date. We, we have submitted to Washington Township some inquiries that we had, we heard back from them actually late last week.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about, the hearing back part. But we know who they are, they're all our residents. We ought to be able to send a letter and say, "Here's the state of the state with respect to the community authority."
Well, we could certainly care the city's position. I just don't think we can represent the community authorities' position in that case.
Well, we can represent our, yeah, our position or what we're doing, or let them know that we're at least trying so we don't have them back up here at the podium again. That's a problem.
And Jennifer and I have been in communication regularly with residents who've wanted to be closely engaged.
It's something, Mike, it sounds like some of the problems the authority board itself.
We're still waiting on that meeting, right?
Could I, could I ask a follow-up question to that because I had that written down also, Mike? Why is it that the developer, which is Edwards Company, why are they not sitting down and having this meeting?
Good question.
The conversation I had with them is they wanted to schedule a meeting after the, after the second week in November.
After the second week in November?
After.
Well, why don't we do it at Thanksgiving then?
After next week.
Okay.
That's what they told me.
Wait until Thanksgiving and then Christmas.
Well, I think that...
Well, I'm sure they're very busy, but from my observation, it seems like they just don't care.
I don't think they care either.
And that's unfortunate, particularly that organization.
I will call them again.
You know, and they try to do other things here in this community. I'd like to see them step up here and move along with this thing now.
I'll relay that, sir.
Appreciate it.
I think I'd tell them council's pretty adamant on this. We're expecting a resolution to this quickly. Okay.
Thanks, Mike. Great.
I got just one thing. Saw in our packet a memo from Sandra regarding Veterans Day ceremonies and, you know, this looks fine. One thing I was going to bring up, the budget, but I just wanted to kind of plant the seed now with all of you, if I may, that, you know, I've been contacted by people from Rotary, some high schools, other veterans groups, there's some businesses here in town that actually train some veterans that are coming back from Afghanistan and the like. And it strikes me that, you know, we do it, this is a nice job, it's a nice event, but I think we could do a lot more to promote awareness of veterans and Veterans Day and the importance of Veterans Day even. And it strikes me that maybe through the budget process, we could suggest that maybe this community relations, maybe they could help to reach out to other groups within the community and make this maybe a bigger event. I personally, I'd like to see that. Obviously, I'm biased because I am a veteran, but I think it's important, I mean, it's good that we are involving Sales Middle School and the younger people in the community, but I think it's also very important for all of them and everybody in the community to know just what veterans have done. And I think that would be kind of a nice thing for us to consider, maybe the budget process. I don't think it costs a lot of money because I think a lot of these businesses would, would step up and, and help to fray any cost, but I think it could be a, a program that is, that is encompassing others in the community as well.
Maybe some, some more input from us with respect to programming.
Yeah, I was going to say, freshen the event.
Yeah. And the same would go with Memorial, Memorial Day as well, but I think that would, you know, I mean, we're, we're a large community now and, and we have a lot of veterans here and I just think it would be nice, be a nice thing to do, for all concerned. My two cents.
Thank you, Dan. John?
I just want to say that thought spooktacular was spooktacular. The, I never saw so many happy adults and children.
Because they were drinking sugar or what?
They were just overrunning the place and just the gaggle of kids just having a great time. This is one thing we do every year, just for the children, and it was just really well done and I was very much moved to see how many young people, like in our audience, had volunteered for that event and was out doing everything from throwing, helping throw rings on the witch's hat to all the other things that went on there, which was a wild myriad of different fun things for children to do. And I thought it was just great to see our youth volunteering their time for public service and doing something out there, so I was really impressed with that. And then had a note from Juana, who was on the bicycle task force and she's moving out of state and she just wants to say, since Warren's here, he was a member of that, she said that was the most agreeable group she's ever worked with and just had a great time. So, she wanted to share that before she left and congratulations on winning the award for the bronze award. So, she was very, very pleased with that. That's really all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Mary Lee?
I just wanted to remind people that we have a finance committee meeting on November 25th for the Hotel Motel tax grants and everybody, of course, is invited to come to that if they'd like. And that will be at 6:00 in this room. I had a couple questions about, follow-up questions, the timing of the roundabout at Kaufman and Brand. What is the new date or are we, that it's going to be open?
Based upon the recent information I had from Paul last week, we're looking at November 8th, Friday, which will be not too far away.
Terrific. A week from Friday, wonderful news. That's great. That's only three days past what we originally had said, November 5th, I mean.
Yeah, and originally, when we first had the contract awarded, it was November 20th and we worked with the contractor and they worked some Saturdays and we paid some additional overtime fees. So, there have been some different dates and November 1st and then November 8th. And based upon our information that we had at the end of last week, it's still on schedule for November 8th.
Wonderful. Also, going down Brand Road tonight, I noticed the bike path has been dug out now. And so, what is the timing of the completion of that project?
That I'm going to defer to Paul. I'm not sure what...
Actually, we're, it really is a work in progress with the contractor. Because of the late start on the project, we're going to get as much done as we can, right up to when the asphalt plants close. We're hopeful that probably 70 to 80% of the project can be completed, with the exception of the bridges, they won't be set probably till the first part of the year. And we've got one, one utility conflict that we're working with presently.
What will you do to secure the, those areas that lead through the bridges? Because people are going to be on that path if it's done, that's going to be a potential hazard.
Right. And we'll just work to cordon them off, so...
One thing, too, I just haven't noticed this tonight and I know it's working right now, so, but to be conscious of these big machines in front of people's yards and that, you know, that we can get that over with as soon as possible because some of them are pretty unsightly and that, for houses that are closer to the road than those that are further back.
Correct. Yeah, and we, we appreciate that and recognize that and we do have a full-time individual out there on site, an inspector.
Oh, great.
Working with the contractor, so...
Great. Well, that's exciting.
Yep. Thank you.
Also, Marsh, thank you. Marsh, I was wondering about, in the Ohio Municipal League legislative reports that we've been getting, last week it indicated that there would be a hearing this Wednesday on House Bill 5. I know in, last week in email exchanges with Fay, she, of course, had yet to have a new, you know, a new House bill to look at, a substitute bill. Do you know if she received that?
She, she did receive some information. They're having hearings tomorrow and Wednesday and then the representatives from the local communities are meeting with Representative Beck on Friday and Fay is scheduled to be at the meeting next Monday night to provide an update to council.
Okay, great.
Can I follow up on that? It seems to me that when we had an earlier conversation regarding this, we talked about contacting our local representatives, you know, probably most, if not all, of council, not that this is, you know, news to us, you know, there was an article, maybe it was in Sunday's paper, about the, at least the authors', perception of this continued erosion of municipalities' home rule authority, which is, comes as no surprise to us, obviously. But anyway, we're, does council remember that discussion that we had regarding...
And I think we, didn't we have our legislative person talking to them?
Yeah, we've had our, the individuals that we work with, Counter and Associates, Matt Counter's been involved, as well as Chris Vanis, working with our local representatives and we've had conversations. And of course, Fay, her involvement, she's had quite a few conversations and have actually had meetings with our representatives so that they understand the issues and the impact to the city and, to the city of Dublin and to all cities.
And do we believe they're being supportive of our position?
I, I think they, they understand our position and in, in some cases, they're supportive of some of the issues. Now, to say whether they're supportive of all of the issues, I don't know that, that I could say that, but we continue to work with them on, on some of the issues that we're trying to address.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mary Lee.
I'm fine. Also, I just wanted to follow up with council. One thing that I was thinking might be a good thing to implement, starting in 2014, is that when we assign committees' goals to achieve, or assignments, whatever we call these things, that we put a date next to them so that we kind of hold ourselves accountable for completing them and maybe the date would help us remember what, when we did those things. So, if you could sort of help us do that, Anne. And the other thing is on one of them, the Code of Conduct for Boards and Commissions, which we had many, many months ago, had a draft, I would like to see us complete that so that we, in 2013, so that we can use it in 2014 when we're interviewing and making assignments. So, I, I don't know, you know, how that can be done, but I, I would like support for getting that particular thing done.
You have it at council, draft again, presented at council next...
At the next meeting?
Yeah, we, we can include that in your, your next council packet and be prepared to have follow-up discussion and conversation.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
Well, Mary Lee took three of my concerns.
Oh, good.
I know, lucky for everybody else.
Not at all.
No, five. I, first off, would like to say thank you to the Dublin Convention Bureau, Visitors and Convention Bureau, for always including their minutes in our packet. I think that's a valuable thing when we subsidize different organizations, that they let us know by minutes where they're headed and I always find them interesting. I'd like to ask our law director, when, this land that we are purchasing on the river is in Washington Township and not in the city of Dublin, corporate lines?
Yeah, there's, the one small parcel where the Indian run, it's currently in the city of Dublin and then the second parcel to the north of that, which is the, the larger parcel, is in Washington Township and not in the city of Dublin.
So, I assume the day after we have the purchase agreement, or the transaction is finished, we'll file for annexation?
Think we can get approval?
Yeah, I think we can get approval, yes. I'm not sure it'll be done the day after.
I guess I was being facetious about that, Mr....
We've already talked about that, Kathy.
Okay. The one thing I'm going to bring up, and when people first hear it, it's kind of negative, but being, again, a session at NLC, and I've talked to our planners about parking meters that actually, once they're installed, they turn out to be a positive influence. I think I would like, if possible, that the staff might look at parking meters, installing them in our historic area. They can be cute if you want to know, but the money that you can collect from them has different ways you can use it. First off, to pay for the parking meters, but then anything extra, you can start investing in the district for the historic business area or whatever. But I think it might be something that we might want to consider, considering that there are very positive types of reports on that. I guess maybe, Justin, if you're around, you might verify that or not. I guess not. In any case, can we get a report?
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at that. I know in the past, we've had some review of that issue and there've been some changes that probably make it a little more feasible now than in the past, based upon some of the automation of the meters.
Okay.
There's always negatives and positives when you have meters and there's issues involved and typically, there's not a lot of revenue that's generated.
Right.
To be used for other items, but we can, we can take a look and provide updated information.
Okay, thank you. I think it might address some immediate needs and cause maybe a little more comfort, but they also can be attractive if you choose the right style. So, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amy?
I just have one item, based on everybody else getting other items taken care of. And looking at our West Innovation District, it, and this comes because we're doing the Shire Rings corridor study, staff was working on that, or is working on that. And as a result of my meetings that I attend with the P&amp;Z chair and staff monthly to talk about P&amp;Z issues, we're talking about the zoning in the West Innovation District and the fact that there are items in that, that portion of the community that can be built by right and, you know, housing is one of them, retail is another. And of course, when we had that in, in the zoning, it was more of a, you know, after the office is there, after the, the businesses are there, then we need supportive retail for the businesses and the surrounding, you know, community. We need housing in so much as it supports the businesses or perhaps the medical school. And what the planning director, Langworthy, said to me was that they have folks that come and they want, you know, an apartment complex or something, for example, and, you know, just stuck out there with nothing else. And so, what I'm hearing is developers are wanting to maybe, in certain situations, cherry pick the things out of the code that they want to put in without the other, other things in place that make those uses make sense. And so, I'm thinking that maybe we need to make those other uses a conditional use or take them out of that zoning category and, you know, zone them back in once we get the, the appropriate office development. I'd like a recommendation from staff how to handle that because I believe that most of those things, they can, they have a right to. And, you know, we don't want that undesirable, you know, condition to exist. So, it seems like we just need to make some, I would guess, probably some minor tweaks, but I'd like for staff to look into that.
Yeah, we can, we can provide updated information. We'll get with Dana and, and the planning staff and bring information back to council.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
I could comment if you'd like.
No. We're going to have to report.
The, Amy's right. I mean, we do have some uses out there that were intended to be supporting the content of the West Innovation District, which is more office, manufacturing, and we're supporting the work... supporting the workers who were supposed to be there. We are getting some inquiries about things that are going in advance of the workers being there. So, we've been talking with, the people we've been talking with, our comment back to them is, we're not generally supportive of building those kind of densities in advance of having the workers there without the intent, clearly the intent was to have supporting workers there before it was built, not preceding it. So, we've been, I'd say discouraging, if you will, of having those projects come in too far in advance.
And the other thing also, and I'm glad you stayed there because I wanted to mention, transitioning from the residential that's just south of Shire Rings and the Ballantry Community, making sure that that's done properly as well and maybe, you know, putting something in the code that assures that.
Correct, in two ways, transitioning, not just the use, but one of the things we've been talking a lot about is the building height.
Right.
And making sure that we don't put overwhelmingly large buildings on that site.
Height, use, architecture, all those things that we know, you know, are good for neighborhoods.
Yes, and that's part of the, that is part of the Shire Rings Corridor Study, too.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything other than to say, I'm happy to hear about the impending opening of the Kaufman Brand Road Roundabout, happy to hear that and appreciate everybody's hard work towards getting that done. So, with that, we're adjourned, thank you.